To call to order the Exeter School Board meeting Tuesday, May 9th at 6:00 PM. First on the agenda is the PTO update. Joy, how do you pronounce your last name?
Tobin.
Tobin, okay.
Do I need the mic? So we have a lot going on towards the end of the year. So happy Teacher Appreciation Week to the teachers that are in here. We'll be helping staff the lunches that are taking place at MSS tomorrow and LSS on Thursday, along with a lot of parents. We've seen a lot of activity in volunteering since we sent everything home in the school folder, so thank you very much. We've gotten a lot of interest and it's been great. We'll also be doing coffee carts to support testing for all the teachers and administrators in the schools. So it'll be the 12th at MSS, the 15th here, and I'll be here. We already have volunteers signed up for that as well. We have the Get Fit in May coming up, so that's going great. Fundraising's going great. We're almost at our goal already, and we've still got some time for registrants. I think the sponsorships are probably all in. We also got a request today to support the 4th grade students and teachers to go to a field trip for Farm Day, so we all agreed to that. We have teacher raffles that are due tomorrow. I know they're a big hit in my house, especially the milkshake ones. And we're happy we have the artist in residence here this week, too, right? So I've heard some really positive feedback at home and from friends there. And again, just back to volunteer recruitment, like I said, we have had some really good responses. We're going to keep up with them. And then we're going to kick off next school year with a PTO event, so hopefully to get everybody in from the beginning. So we talk to Rob over at Exeter Bowling Lanes, I think, you know, bowling night, and invite all those folks that have been willing to volunteer, whether they've participated or not, and just get everything started off right. So that's about it, what's been going on. But it's a fun end of the year. Any questions?
No.
First of all, that's awesome. You guys are doing, that's incredible, all that you're doing, so thank you.
Thanks.
I just had a question. I guess for my own curiosity and anyone who's listening, you're obviously doing a tremendous job with all the fundraising. And how does the PTO sort of make decisions on where to use the funds?
So right now, it's been by request, right? So when we get a request from someone within LSS or MSS, we pose it at the PTO meeting or to those elected officials of the PTO. Like, the request today for the field trip funds was, you know, need to make a quick decision, so we did it with those that are signed for the PTO. Speaking of that, though, we will have elections on May 16th. We haven't had an overwhelming response for people that want to join. But if anyone else wants to join the PTO and be part of that decision-making process, we're happy to do that. We're lucky to have money in the coffers, where as long as it makes sense and supports the students and the T-shirts in the school, we've been able to say yes to most requests since I've joined. So we're happy to do that and keep it going.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
Just wanted to clarify. Get Fit in May, that's on the 20th, right?
It is, yeah.
So it's still a couple weeks away.
Yeah.
And it starts at 8:30 with the fun run, or a little bit before?
I think, yeah. I can't remember if the fun runs eight or 8:30, and then the actual five k.
Then the five k after that. I know it starts early.
It does start early, yes. Volunteers start at, like, 6:00 AM for a setup.
Okay.
I'm doing race route, so mine's a little bit later, so, you know, selfishly.
And for people that aren't directly participating but want to come, how late do you think events will still be going on if someone wanted to come and join?
So I think up until about 9:30 or 10 o'clock, as people, I know that when we're doing the race route, that ends at 10:30, so thinking everybody would be done by then, so there's still, but I think it really, unless, you know, usually wraps up by around 10 o'clock.
So somewhere between, like, 8 and 10 or 10:30?
Eight and 10, 10:30, I think would be a good time. And there's still time to sign up. I signed up my daughter the other day. It's just she wouldn't guarantee for a T-shirt now.
Is the 25th anniversary of it?
It is the 25th anniversary. I was like, no, it's the 20th. Wait a minute. Yeah, no, it is the 25th anniversary, so. And we've gotten a lot of really good corporate sponsors. The Get Fit in May final meeting before the races tomorrow night, so, yeah. Margaret and I have kind of split duties, so I've been doing this meeting while she does that meeting, so, yeah. It'll be fun. So we hope to have the whole PTO there as well, all four of us.
And I just want to say, I love the bowling idea. I know I've heard from some parents that they're seeking, especially coming out of COVID, like, more opportunities to meet other parents. There's certainly the opportunities that are presented through the school, but often, like, you're so focused on your kiddo and, like, trying to get to all the things, and so just really appreciate you all thinking about those opportunities.
Yeah, it was an idea that came up in the last PTO meeting, and we were trying to cram it into the end of this year, and then we thought, really doesn't make sense. We've got these volunteers, but we've been asking for a lot, and people have been doing a lot. So we're like, okay, where do we fit it in? And we thought, well, we kick off the next year, because when people get into new classrooms, they want to sometimes, you know, meet, you know, parents of children that they haven't been in class with before. So I think kicking off, you know, with a week or two into the school year is a nice time, so thank you. We want, always open to ideas of more things to do, I think, now that Margaret and I have settled in, and there's kind of a lot of paperwork and administration to be done when we first took over and kind of learning the ropes. But now I think we're able to take on a little bit more.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next on the agenda is the administrative update from Esther Asbell. And financials by Molly.
All right, so thank you for signing the manifest. So in your board pack, there is a current year financial. So you see this time of year, we always have a little bit of supplies, because we always tell everyone to put all the supply orders in the Friday before April vacation, because if you don't need it now, you probably don't need it until next year. Did anybody have any questions? So in the upper left-hand corner, those are all the changes from the prior month. And then in the bottom, there's the additional revenue. I think we went over a lot of these last month, that were new last month. Did anyone have any questions? Perfect. So with the cost savings and the revenue higher than planned, in the upper right-hand corner, that gives us the $1.4 million fund balance. I wonder if you want to talk about?
I'm going to leave it.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Molly.
So you'll see on the agenda, meal prices. That's Jean Pierce every year makes a recommendation. She reviews the data and the cost of meals and inflation and all those things, and so she's making a recommendation to the board that for next year, the breakfast will remain at $2, and the milk remain at $0.50, and lunch increase from $3 to $3.10. So she's recommending a $0.10 increase based on, again, inflation, et cetera, the amount of folks that have eat and don't eat, and so she analyzes all that and comes up with a recommendation, as well as there are some rules and regulations from the federal level about your meal prices and how closely they have to be in regards to free and reduced lunch prices, et cetera. So she also sort of has to adjust for that change. So if they change, which they usually do, then we have to change to keep that ratio within the guidelines. So if, I would need a motion from the board to raise the lunch price from $3 to $3.10 for next school year.
Okay. Janice, someone to, okay, I propose that we raise the lunch cost next year from $3 to $3.10.
A second? Is there any discussion? No. Okay, everybody in agreement, signify by saying aye.
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 Great, thanks. I do have some other things, but one of them should probably come under the facilities report from Rusty, and that also has to do with safety, so I can do it either place, as well as, you may recall that the board, I let the board know that we were going to take that professional development money of $28,000 for OG training, and that was going to be the end of June, and because it was coming out of this year's budget, essentially, and in that PD line, and occur before the end of June, that was all going to work just fine. Once we got teachers and everyone organized, they're actually, that training is now going to be in August. So I do need a motion from the board that's documented for auditors to say that you approve of the expenditure of $28,000 for the Orton-Gillingham training that will happen in August. The staff will get paid out of a grant for their time. We raised it to $200 a day across the SAU 16, it used to be 125, but with cost of childcare and all those kinds of things, we tried to balance that out. But that expense will be covered by grants, and then I'm hopeful that the board will approve that expenditure for our teachers to attend that training. It aligns with the science of reading and breaking the code and all that the most recent research says is the best way to teach kids reading. So they're classroom teachers. All of our special education case managers have already had the training, so now they'll both have the same training, which will create that common language, which we hope will support students in a better way. Did I say that wrong, Molly?
No, no, you said it right. I just want to make a motion from the board.
Yeah. So I would love a motion to raise this money from this budget.
Or that $200 from FY '23.
Okay.
I will make a motion to spend the money from FY '23 for this training in August.
All right. Thank you.
I'll second. Any discussion? We already kind of discussed this, right? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is the training full? Do you have everybody signed up?
We offered it to all SAU 16, and we have at least 30. We may have a little bit over 30, which is, and they're all classroom teachers. So that'll be nice.
Just for clarity, is there, I guess this may be also for the principals, but is there, like, so there's an offering, but is there, like, also an expectation that all teachers eventually go through the training? Like, are we trying to get?
That's what we hope to. That's eventually a goal, so it's hard to do in the school year, because it's an intensive training. So it's, you know, some folks in the summer, it's just impossible, but maybe next summer it might be possible. Certainly, I know Dr. Bennett will try to get everyone trained as he possibly can, because it does support all of our kids going to the sixth, right, to that common 6th through 12th experience. And so I think, I anticipate, and we already see some data, that as you've seen, that our kids are really making good growth, and I anticipate we'll see that in the middle school as these kids move forward, that their reading, et cetera, will also reflect there. Time will be easier and more successful as they go into middle and high school. So that's our goal.
Great.
As far as the end of the year in the SAU office, we are, Human Resources is working hard to get all the contracts out. Teacher contracts have gone out, now and next are paras, and those have gone out, depending on the school you're in, and then administrators, they're coming, they're coming. And so we go through that process, but they've been working hard and doing a good job. Hiring, we are happy to announce that we did just negotiate a contract with a new SAU tech director. His name is Jason Hills. That bio should be coming out hopefully tomorrow or the next day. He's sending us his information for that bio. So that will replace Richard Pratt, our K-12 tech director, who is retiring, who we all will greatly miss, by the way. And all the local schools and show the principals will speak to it, are doing their own hiring process, and we will bring those to the board should there be a nomination. Usually in June, as the board may recall, I'll ask for hiring rights during the summer months, but certainly we don't need that until June, because we'll meet again. So just in case somebody leaves over the summer or something like that, it's nice to have that flexibility to do a quick hire. So that'll be coming next month, that request. And I think, other than the safety and the facilities, if I can speak to those now, or I can wait till those committees?
I would prefer to wait.
Okay. I have just one question about the meals, just not about the price increase, but I know that nationally, in the news, that schools across the country are, have debt from, you know, meals, and that part of that is that you don't want to turn the student down who needs a lunch or breakfast when they come in. And I know the decision, like, the shift from the federal policy of subsidizing meals during COVID, that's a state-by-state, that's not within our control over whether those, you know, remain subsidized or not. I guess I'm curious, as we go into next year, just what feedback you're getting from families, both those who are, you know, requesting some support for food, but also other families around sort of, I don't know, I guess I'm just curious what we're experiencing in our schools, and if that's informing any way of sort of communicating around the meal program next year?
Yeah, I think, in particular, at Exeter, we have actually a fairly small food debt. It's right between $2,000 and $3,000. We were just talking about it tonight. So there is, which is fairly reasonable for us. Our policy dictates that we give every kid the regular lunch, no matter what, or breakfast, or, you know, it's just, that's part of our policy, that we do that. So I haven't gotten any feedback, really, either way. I'm not sure if principals or anyone wants to speak to that.
Jean, here she'll send us a list occasionally that shows who has the debts, and we work with our social worker and other people to try to make contact, like, not in a shameful way, but of saying, like, you know what the resources are, we can help you, and let's get it completed, so that you're not getting sent all these notifications. It's like, we try to stay up on top of it to make sure that families have the means to submit for it, but we don't really press for that. When they come through, we're chatting in, try to work with families to make sure they get covered if they qualify.
Yeah.
I would say Jean sends out the list occasionally to review, and then you'll see on the financials, one of the items noted under the four pillars is for the lunch debt, it's like the administration line, as you've recorded. That's not all lunch debt, but that's just a part of what's in the building administration line. So at the end of the year, your operating budget covers any bad debt that's spent.
Well, I will be transparent, because my kids go to school with a lunch and then also get the school lunch, so I appreciate the reminders, because I don't always know, you know? And it's great, but, you know, that aside, it's great to know that you are following up with families to offer, that need it, to offer assistance.
You're seeing a lot of the higher levels in the corporate.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
So I want to, can I just build on that? Because this is something that's been brought up by the board in past years, particularly pre-COVID. You sort of transitioned into that, talking about the change from the federal subsidy, where essentially anyone without filling out paperwork was eligible for free lunch, not even reduced lunch. And I think that's always been a concern of mine and a concern of other members of the boards at different times, that we shouldn't have any student that's concerned about the cost of food at school. I mean, we're talking about, we have a substantial, you know, amount of money that's unexpended. And I know in the past, there's been some changes, and Esther was really helpful, and, you know, some of the other administrative folks have been helpful in trying to figure out what the need was and try to budget more money towards that. But if there's a deficit where we need to supplement, you know, student lunches, then I'm all for that it be built into the budget, personally. I mean, I think, you know, as we look at things in the fall, if it turns out that we're running into $3,000 of debt, or that there's $20,000 of need, or whatever it is, I think we should build into the budget, because I just don't think any student should ever come here and have to worry about it. I understand that we give them the food anyhow, but some people may be opting out because they haven't, you know, they don't feel that they qualify. And I know that it's been a bit of a transition to getting them to fill out the paperwork after not having to have done that before, but whatever we can do, I mean, I would just love it if it was somewhat, I don't know, knee-blind isn't quite the right word, but every student that needed lunch, you know, got it and didn't have to worry about the cost.
Can I?
Yeah.
So in reality, what you say happens. Every student gets lunch. The only thing I'd like the board to consider is that it does impact our Title I funding, which then really supports our ESY program and the tutor program and a lot of things here, because we do get a good percentage of funding, grant funding, under Title I, and the way they figure Title I is through your free and reduced applications.
Right.
So if we had a no-application process, then we would not have any way to get Title I funds, and that's a fairly large amount of funding for us.
Right, that's an excellent point. I mean, I'm certainly not trying to undermine that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so whatever the right balance is, I mean, I just think it's something to continue to discuss, because we, you know, when we talk about things with an equity lens, you know, this is one of those areas that affects every, you know, every student, and it shouldn't just be families of means that, you know, their students feel comfortable during the day. And we have that program with, and was it 64, 68? I forget what the right term, 64 Hours of Hunger? You know, and I, we haven't heard from them lately in terms of coming to the board, but I assume they're still active, and, you know, and they feel a need, but that's for a really relatively small percentage of our students that are able to avail themselves of that. So I just think it's something we should continue to look at without undermining our federal funds availability, anything that we can do to be helpful, I think we should try to do.
Is the application for that pretty streamlined, Esther?
It's pretty. I haven't seen the application recently. I don't think it's.
Yeah.
It's two pages. It's basically like your household number, your income, and your, kind of like your bills, and then it gets submitted, and then there's like some algorithm to figure it out.
Okay.
It's pretty straightforward, but, you know, we have some families that might be, like, English, learning English, non-English speaking, and so then we have them come in, we try to, like, work with their interpreter to get things filled out, so try to think about all those angles, but the people itself is not, so.
Is that an area where Andreas would be helpful, and, you know, sort of their staff in terms of figuring out strategies if there are borders that are, or barriers that are there?
On the federal website, there's actually, it's already been translated to quite a few languages, so we do have access to it. I think there's 20-something languages. So when we have, like, a family that comes through, they put anything other than English on their home language survey, that's the one that we send home, so they can understand it. But then it's just like the follow-up, like, did you have questions on it and that sort of thing? And we do have access to the language-making, to some translators, and so we tap that resource if we need somebody to reach out.
That's great.
That's it for the SAU? Unless you have any more questions?
I'm good. Next is the approval of the April 11th meeting minutes. I'm going to guess that Joy's name is T-O-B-I-N, not T-O-I-B-I-N. She's the PTO person?
T-O-B-I-N, yeah.
Yep. And then I just noticed that under superintendent, it's evaluation, not evolution, under committee membership.
My name is just misspelled. It's Elizabeth with an S, not a Z, but I answered all.
Patrick, you're usually pretty good at finding.
I didn't notice anything else. I mean, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Next up, Ryan McCulkey, principal of Lincoln Street School.
It's now, it's like a thing.
Hold on to your hat.
All right, good evening, everyone. The Lincoln Street School update. As Joy Tobin shared, we had an assembly on Monday introducing James Chase, who's going to be our artist in residence over the next about three weeks or so. We had a nice assembly. He kind of gave a little bit of autobiographical information and then just kind of turned that into how he led into a career as an artist, and kind of just shared that journey and shared some of his more public pieces of work that he's done in the Manchester Concord area. And then we kind of talked a little bit about what the process would look like for students here. He's going to be working with students a couple days this week, a couple days next week, and then, I think, the complete week, the week after that. So we are hoping to have a quote-unquote unveiling in early June. And Ms. LeBranch has been working very closely with James, just to kind of work on the timeline, work on how to make sure that kids are active participants and really owning the pieces of work. And the two pieces will be, one will be the exit, I'm trying to just think of where I am right now, but where the students come in when they get off buses, that entrance there, and then the entrance to the building where kids for car drop-off. So the two places where they enter the building, hopefully it's something that just kind of is one more thing to, one, build community, but also to just help them feel welcome and a part of the community, too. We are well underway with New Hampshire SAS. We had an assembly a week prior where we had the school come together to show our junior Blue Hawk spirit, let students know that we, that the Lincoln Street School staff is proud of the work they've engaged in this year, their learning, and that we stand behind them as they get ready for testing. We had the Exeter Blue Hawk mascot make an appearance, give everybody high fives. It was what we hope was a very positive experience, and, you know, the opposite of building up stress or high expectations, but more just about, we are, you know, one community, and, you know, we're proud of you each and every day. Last week, students in grade five completed their NH SAS for science, and this week, we are working in all grade levels. We started today in ELA. Next week, we will complete the process with our New Hampshire SAS math assessments. Students are receiving a snack and a drink and a pep talk before each of their testing sessions, which, again, is a shout-out and a thank you to our PTO and for providing the funds for those snacks and drinks. And then Ms. Lambert is providing or putting together daily shout-outs for each classroom as she's observing good test-taking strategies being implemented. So we're just trying to, those reminders every single day of what we're trying to encourage our students to do as they participate in this. Earth Week, just prior to our spring break, I just wanted to shout out Ms. LeBranch and Ms. Haney, who combined third-grade classes for two weeks, create an art sculpture that you may have seen out in the front entrance area. It was made out of, completely made out of recycled materials, plastic water bottles, cardboard, recycled wooden pallets to create a large sculpture inspired by the designs of the world's most famous glass-blowing artist, Dale Chalui, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Thank you to all of our third-grade students. This is a little bit jumbled up here, but I don't want to skip over and then forget, but we did, when Rich Kane came to us in the summer and asked what we need from the safety and security due to the grants that were available, one of the things that we requested were more radios, both due to the age of the radios that we have, as well as the quantity, and we received 15 radios at the end of last week that are new, and will be dispersing out as needed over the next couple weeks, and certainly making sure that we have everything in place that we need for the fall. So that was exciting. Third grade had New Hampshire State Police K-9 come by, just, does it have a date on that? I think that was just prior to April break as well, to talk a little bit about, students learned about both service and police dogs, and it related to an informational text that they had read called Arrow and Officer Mike. Students learned about the duties, training, and responsibilities of police dogs. Officer Gary Ingraham came to Lincoln Street School with his K-9 dog Shelby, who is seven years old, seven years old and is trained to search for substances and firearms, and was able to do a number of amazing tricks that none of our home pets can do. It was, the kids really enjoyed the presentation, and it was a great text-to-real-world connection for the kids to make as well. Second to third grade transition is well underway. We have, very similar to last year, we have four different points or times for the remaining weeks of the school year, where we will have third-grade classrooms buddy up with second-grade classrooms, and they have four different times that they'll either be meeting or coming to Lincoln Street School. The first meeting is more about the third-grade students going down to Lincoln and making that connection, then students will be coming up to Lincoln Street School to play on the playground together. The third visit will be more about classroom tour, or building and classroom tours, and the fourth one is a little bit more of a traditional step-up day, where they'll be able to meet their next-year teacher, as well as their next year's classmates. We have a parent information night coming up on June 7th, very, again, very similar to last year, where we will introduce families a little bit more to our building, and we did, we did run that. A lot of that event was student-led or student-run, and we look forward to, you know, who is seven-year-old, seven years old and is trained to search for substances and firearms and was able to do a number of amazing tricks that none of our home pets can do. It was, the kids really enjoyed the presentation. And it was a great text-to-real-world connection for the kids to make as well. Second to third grade transition is well underway. We have, very similar to last year, we have four different points or times for the remaining weeks of the school year where we will have third grade classrooms buddy up with second grade classrooms. And they have four different times that they'll either be meeting or coming to Lincoln Street School. The first meeting is more about the third grade students going down to Lincoln and making that connection. Then students will be coming up to Lincoln Street School to play on the playground together. The third visit will be more about classroom tour, or building and classroom tours. And the fourth one is a little bit more of a traditional step-up day where they'll be able to meet their next year teacher as well as their next year's classmates. We have a parent information night coming up on June 7th, very, again, very similar to last year, where we will introduce families a little bit more to our building. And we did, we did run that, a lot of that event was student-led or student-run. And we look forward to, you know, a similar format this year. We have field day, I'm kind of now going forward because we are getting to the end of the year. We have field day scheduled for June 7th, 8th and 9th. On June 7th, typically we would have some volunteers from CMS participate. I think this year we have kind of a conflict with the move-up day for CMS eighth graders. So we actually, it lines up with the senior service day. So we're going to have a bunch of our EHS seniors coming down to volunteer for the morning for that day, which we're excited about. A quick update on our student support center, which is up on our second floor in the third grade wing. And this is also true for Main Street School. MSS and LSS will be remodeling the student support centers. The intensity of student behavioral needs has increased to the degree that the centers will be staffed by personnel with significant behavioral training. And the rooms will work with students specifically with tier-two and lower tier-three needs. And, you know, one of the things that, from the Lincoln Street School perspective is, we have put in a lot of PD and had conversations and training with our teachers where we have centers in the classroom that can handle a lot of the lower-level needs, where if a student needs just to take a quick break or a movement break, fidget break, they can do so within the classroom without having to leave the classroom, go across the building in some cases, which really is a lot of time added up. We really want this space to really target those students that really need some more structured assistance, staying regulated and being able to engage in their learning. And so we feel like this is going to, one, empower our teachers to really employ some of that learning that they've had. But two, really be able to target some, some students that are kind of like in-between, right? You know, they're not receiving the, the really high-level services because they're not identified, but their needs aren't quite being, aren't quite being met in the model that we have right now. And the very final things that I have, prior to April break, Lincoln Street sent two staff members, Julie, our curriculum director, and Zoe, more of our math coach, to the Learning and Brain Conference in New York City in April, thanks to funds made available through the Professional Growth Fund. The conference brought together some of the best leading researchers on the best environments for highly effective student learning, as well as the most up-to-date research on how the brain learns. Julie and Zoe both expressed that the conference was very high-quality and look forward to sharing much of what they learned with colleagues. And so we just, again, a thank you for that opportunity. And lastly, fifth grade celebration of learning, squeaking it in, is May 31st at 5:30 with a focus on the American Revolution. And we have, for fifth grade, we have our DARE graduation, May 25th during the school day. And then they have a celebratory cookout with Exeter Police Department providing a little barbecue up at Exeter Rec. And I think that's June 13th. So that's kind of their end-of-year hurrah, but also a recognition of the accomplishment of completing the DARE program.
Question, I feel like I should know this, but do we have a elevator that goes to the second floor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, right there.
Okay.
Yes.
I've never, I don't even think I've been on the second floor.
I, I'll be honest, I haven't ridden the elevator yet, but you know, something to look forward to, but yes.
Usually every year, the fifth grade class, the art teacher does like a final art project that's left behind, right? Are they doing that this year?
Yeah, we do a, they do a tribute and stuff. I don't, I don't know if the mural is counting as the fifth grade.
Okay.
This time, because it's, our behind a lot of time.
Yeah.
LA, Ms. LaBranch hasn't mentioned anything, so it might be the mural is the gift.
Right. That sounds pretty significant.
Yes, I would agree.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Main Street School Principal, Tanya.
He did take some of mine, so I'll be a little bit more brief. Well, I'll say, we also got the radios and they're, they are really cool. And our teachers, Beth, she oversees a lot of the safety at our school and so she's working on getting them distributed right now. I was questioned once before at the board about the access to the radios. So the plan is everybody that's on our mental health team and everybody that, that jumps in to assist a child that might be in need, like our crisis team, we will all have a radio. And then there will be a shared radio between two classrooms that have a conjoining door. And so then that, that's like how we're starting to make sure that there's like good access. And then if we have to evacuate or anything like that, then there's a good means of communication. So we're excited. We appreciate the grant monies and Rich doing all of that and getting it set up. So just wanted to acknowledge that. Our PTO, sometimes I think they undersell themselves a little bit when she's up here. They do some really good things. And so I, that was going to be part of my shout-out is just what they've done for us this week. And we've reached out for all staff appreciation. It's just kind of easier to group everybody together and not, and miss anybody. And so we've been pestering them with lots of ideas and everything that we've asked, they're like, yes, yes, let's do that, let's do that. Anything that's kind of out of the budget. We've also been talking about, I think I mentioned it the last time we were here with our playground equipment, on getting some accessible playground equipment. We've shot ideas their way. They're like, yeah, just tell us what you want to do. I mean, they're, they're pretty understanding and awesome anytime that we reach out. But they do cover all the beginning of the school year, like classroom supplies. There's a certain budget that each teacher gets. They pay for the buses for the field trips, playground and recess equipment, any of the educational programs or like supplemental things that we want to do for enrichment. They do teacher and staff welcome back and appreciation lunches, and that's just like a little bit. I mean, really, anything that we kind of tap into them that's outside of the scope of our budget, they're eager to help out with. So we appreciate them and we have been, they've been doing a lot this week, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. We also have been doing Earth Day activities. There was a flyer that went home for kids to participate in. And then a lot of our teachers decided to do like a planting gardening day. And so they were outside, the weather was nice that day, and so there were lots of those activities. And then we had some families just come this past weekend to do a cleanup in our butterfly garden. And the green team oversees all of that work. And so they do a lot of campus beautification and they're working next year on doing more information, like just little tidbits for families, like turning off your light saves us much power and little things like that, just to do some information. So there's some good, good plans going on. We had an author visit yesterday. We have had some celebrations of learning. We've had woodland animals, the animal and plant adaptations biography. We had music performances last week. And then on the 18th, our UAs are doing a combined celebration of learning, so families can walk through. And that's the same night that our book fair, Scholastic Book Fair is taking place. We try to be very cognizant about flying it this time, to make sure that fundraiser was included in that. But I do think it's important so that they understand, like, there's going to be a fundraiser going on and how to kind of keep that separate from some of the other activities so that like families are not forced to kind of like flow through that area and be bombarded with requests or anything from kids. So we've met a couple of times just to talk about that and to talk about the future of the book fair and if that's something that we want or need to continue doing. So I just wanted to follow up and say we've been having those conversations. Lincoln Street let some of our kindergartners come up to look at their brook trout presentation, which they have like a bunch of itty-bitty cute trout and our kindergartners loved it. But they've been doing research on the Exeter River and the wildlife in there. And so it was something to connect to it and so they had the best time coming up. So appreciate them hosting our kindergartners. Second grade had their first field trip to Great Bay. One of the groups that went ended up, it was like a day we had bizarre weather and it hailed there. And so I was sent lots of videos of the kids so excited about the hail coming down. They had to pause and go under the awnings, but memory-making nonetheless. And then we are in hiring season, so next month when we get together, we will bring you the names of some people that we'd like to nominate for a kindergarten position and a first grade position, and then also for a global skills position. And right now, we're working on building class rosters for next year, what our professional development plan for next year is going to be, what our summer programming, finishing up some of that stuff and hiring our step-up days, field days. There's some more field trips coming up. We have our Connect to Kinder where we're going to have waves of kindergarten come in to do some screeners and just to kind of experience like a little short day and meet some of the peers and the teachers. And then our Sunshine Committee is working on developing a fun school-wide theme to unify our school that will kind of be like our mottos and our newsletters and all of that to be joining up. So we're having fun planning that. And for DEIJ, Abby wasn't able to attend tonight. We've had, I mean, we've mentioned before, like it's constant, like we have ongoing conversations about DEIJ all the time. But I did want to appreciate, there were a couple of volunteers that came through our front lobby and they went through some of our books that are just sitting out for families using the seven forms of bias. And so they're going through and taking some probably out. I think they're doing that work right now. And then we are going to supplement them with some more inclusive titles for families to come in. And we've just been talking in general about like, what is the first impression when you walk into our school? And making sure that it is a welcoming place. And we've given some of the parents that are on the, on that, the anti-racism parent group, that there is going to be, they're in charge of a bulletin board when you first come in that just will have like some welcoming information and translated information and all of that kind of stuff when you first walk into our school. So that's just our big focus right now as we go into summer projects, to make sure that the first impression is a welcoming and warm and inclusive one. That's it.
I'm not sure I've heard of a global skills position.
So it's, it's kind of a, just a shuffling, like what Ryan was talking about and doing some of the things with the SSC. There's, so we have Nicole Conroy's in there right now. And so it's, I don't, Diana might be able to speak to this more of kind of moving some things around. It's not a new position, I think, in our budget, but she could speak to it.
It's not. So Nicole Conroy, who's amazing and just great about all things instruction and behavioral, is going to work as our behavior specialist. We're going to move her into the student support center and she's going to have a little team of people that are going to work with students on tier-one, late tier-one, tier-two, and then early tier-three to really help those behaviors that are kind of bubbling up over the, the course of the building and things that kind of help, you know, contribute to a calmer atmosphere. We've hired another woman, you'll be meeting her shortly when she comes forward. She's going to be part of our IDA grant, so there's no, we're not adding a position at this point in the school budget. And she's going to be then working with our global skills population. This is a group of students with multiple disabilities, need really specific programming in terms of assisted communication, gross motor, fine motor. Their, their plans are really all-encompassing in terms of how academics meet, you know, works with PT and OT and, and speech. So we've got a new person joining us and we're, we're really thrilled to have her.
Thank you.
Very unique skill set and she has a lot of experience, so it's great.
What does IDA stand for?
I D A.
It's I D A, Individual Disabilities.
Education's Act.
Education Act, thanks. And we get a grant.
Okay.
And so that's part of our funding.
Great. Thank you.
Tanya, the green team, is that, is that made up of teachers and staff or are there?
Parent, it's parents.
Parents.
At our level, it's parents. There are some students, I think, that help out at Lincoln. But it's a parent meeting and they ask for some volunteers. And then we do have a couple of teachers that will pop in and represent. And then Ryan and I are on with them once a month. And they're like, if you drive through the back of our school, we have those no idling signs. They ran that contest. And some of the composting that hap, actually, all the composting that happens at our schools is because that was one of their initiatives. We use, we wash silverware instead of throwing away silverware. They have, they gave compost bins for each of our classrooms for like snack bins that get dropped off down in the compost in the cafeteria every day. So that's a parent-driven team.
And parents sign up in the beginning of the year?
I'm trying to think of how they, I think it actually comes through the PTO. They, they put a flyer out of like, if anybody wants to join the green team, this is when we meet. And there's a Zoom link and we meet once a month in the morning.
Great.
Can I, can I just bring up something about the PTO?
Sure.
I love the PTO first of all. But one of the things, I shouldn't follow the statements with a "by" immediately. It sounds negative. One of my concerns is that I, I hate to see them feel like they need to be driven by fundraising because we've made a big shift over the years. At one point in time, the PTO funded a lot of the field trips and whatnot, and we built that into the budget. If there are other components that are PTO-funded and you don't feel that it's properly funded in the budget, rather see that built into the budget. Right now, we're talking, I know it's an unusual year, but we're talking about returning a sizable amount of money to the voters. I just hate to see them stressing about budgetary things when things like the green team or things like teacher appreciation weeks. And I, I think the Fun Run is an amazing community event. It also happens to be a fundraiser. But I just would hate to see them stressed out about, we really have to raise a certain amount of money or else we're letting our teachers and our community down because we have the money in the budget or we can generate the money in the budget to adequately fund the things.
I think they would agree with you.
Yeah.
And we've had some conversations about it. Actually, some of the meetings that we've had of like, if, if we don't really need the money, we can slow down on the fundraising. And so that has been part of the conversation. I think the, you're right about the Get Fit in May. It's like just a fun event and it does bring in like a sizable amount of money.
Yeah.
And so that's what we've been, I, I think more of the conversation is about how do we spend the money that is in there as opposed to fundraising, because there is a decent amount of money in there. And so it's like, well, we don't want it just to sit in this pot. Like, what is it benefiting? So that's where some of the conversations about like, what about the accessible playground equipment? That's like a good chunk of change that benefits the community and our schools. And so they're like, yeah, that seems like a great resource. Or like some of the, the art or the enrichment things, like they're, they're supportive of doing that. But right now, really, the focus is to spend down some of the money that had been previously obtained and has just been like sitting on this pot during COVID.
Yeah. I remember, and I remember, I'm sorry, just to go for one more second here is that I remember at one point in time, they bought like, I don't know, dozens of iPads because we didn't have the money in our budget. And just, again, that's, the budget has shifted enough that that's built in, that we've built in this renewal for technology and those types of things, or we've been able to do it within the year funds. So I just don't, I just don't want to see them stressed.
I don't know if they're stressed out about fundraising. It really is about like, how do we spend the money? And oftentimes, because you guys are so supportive, oftentimes like an idea will come up and we're like, well, we have a line for that. And we, we have money that we could do that. And so it's like, oh, okay, well, what else could we spend it on? We did, we met with them and generated a bunch of just community ideas. I come from like a Title I background where we did have to have a certain amount of events at the school. And then it was just, that's where people came together, like the school was the hub of just the community coming together. We have generated like a big list of ideas of just like, you know, some kind of community barbecues or a summer movie night and the movie in the park or a science-themed night or Under the Stars, whatever. So we've come up with a bunch of them that are not fundraisers, that are really just about bringing families together and they can hand out some pop schools and just have a place for people to hang out. And so they're, they have been on board with those ideas and suggestions. I think more is going to come next year of just how, how to bring the community together.
I mean, if we can help with that, you should, they should let us know. I probably should have brought this up when the PTO chair was.
No, I'll mention it too.
To that point, I think I know that they often come to these meetings and are like, we need more people to join, you know. And I think perhaps that opens up some ways for parents to commit, like the Get Fit in May. Like I'm going to, there's like a beginning and end, or I'm going to help with this community engagement, you know, where we can, they don't have to feel so pressured to, you know, fundraising role the whole year. And I think it might open up more opportunities for engagement.
Yeah. I think they're looking for like the specific positions of like a treasurer and as, some of those things. They did, we got together and we were like, what if you send something like that out? Like, this is just like a one-and-done, like you want to help with STEAM night. Like send something out where family could sign that off to volunteer. And they did receive quite a bit more feedback. I think that's what she was mentioning, like when she said she sent the thing home in the folder. And I think that'll be an even further drive next year. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, on to the committee reports. The first committee is DEIJ. That's Beth and Susan. Has anybody met since?
No, we haven't had a meeting.
Is there one on the calendar?
I think for Monday, did I just?
This coming Monday?
Yeah.
I did not get a notice.
It went out today.
Oh, oh, I haven't looked. Okay.
15th?
Perfect.
Okay.
After, is, I'm sorry. Details, when is that? Is it after, okay.
I think it's at like 3:15.
Okay.
Also, it looks like they're only.
Oh, good. Okay. Well, I haven't looked at.
Is that Lincoln Street or Main Street?
It's been at Main Street this year, so I would anticipate.
Main Street?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Like where? Where in, like in the library or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. The next committee would be policy. That's Heather and Patrick.
Well, why don't we wait till new business and.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. The next committee would be the Superintendent Evaluation. And we're having our first sort of regroup meeting this Friday at noon with all the new committee members per board. And we're probably have some actionable items for the superintendent's office before end of year, so we can get a jump start on next year. The next committee is Sabbatical and Professional Growth Fund. Patrick and Susan.
And so at that, at this point, that group's not really meeting, but that's, I think the sabbatical deadlines are in the fall. Is that right?
I think it's by December 1st.
Yeah. And then, and then I think the Professional Growth Fund usually meets in the spring if there's, if there's not an approved sabbatical.
Okay.
Right. So that's, so, and we can have it on the agenda, but we're probably not going to have an update until, you know, like around December or January.
Okay. I don't know what Joint Chairs is. That's the next committee?
Yeah, I don't, it's, I mean, I don't know that we necessarily, well, we can have it on here because, so in the past, there's been times when all the chairs of the board had met as a joint chairs and, and had a meeting. That is not something that's happened in the past couple of years, but I don't know what will happen next year.
Okay. I don't remember it being on there.
It wasn't on there in the past. I think it was something, sometimes we've had a chair's update or a chair's report was a separate section. And as part of that report, the chair, if there was a joint chairs meeting, we'll give an update about that, but.
Yeah, I think, I think we just put all the committees on to make sure we got everything right. Cause I think.
Right.
I think the facility is wrong. I think it's supposed to be Beth and Heather, actually. So just like kind of a double check for Sharon. And then next month, I won't put on the ones that I know haven't met.
Aren't active.
Okay, so Joint Chairs probably won't be on there.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
I mean, I think it's, makes sense to keep Sabbatical on there because they do meet sometime throughout the year. The next committee meeting would be Safety and Security. Beth and I both met at the security meeting recently. I think Esther has a big update.
Yeah.
On the findings of that meeting.
Sure, can I maybe report out on that?
Yeah, sure, thanks.
So at the meeting, we had an activity that we asked everyone to do when we kind of grouped people. So it was a nice mix with board members and first responders and administrators, and they were small groups. And they talked through three questions. And then, so this is just the trends, like the top three that came, that were most consistent in all the groups. So the first question was, what is the most important factor related to school safety? And those top themes were training with all stakeholders, communication with all stakeholders, and dedicated resources. So those factors, I think that we do a, a good job on in SAU 16. I think all of our boards is try to dedicate resources and address needs as they arise. And we communicate with all stakeholders. What we can communicate, I think sometimes people think that maybe we're trying to not communicate. But again, when it's safety and security, we can't communicate specifics, which is sometimes it's hard for people to understand. So we try to keep it broad. We do update the webpage about every four to six months. And we just updated it, I want to say about three months ago, our safety webpage. It kind of describes how we, the things we do in SAU 16 without much detail. Question two was, what is working well in our schools regarding safety? Collaborative partnerships with the behavior intervention teams that include mental health and first responders. Those, I think, are probably one of our best ways we keep our schools safe because we can be proactive with our students, particularly in grade six through eight. It's students generally in the K through five. We work with the whole family, which is why our social workers are on those teams as well as some school counselors, as well as administration. So there's like the disciplinary role. Our police officer is in training. We have two police officers that are supposed to be coming to our elementary teams, but they had rotated people through, and so we have to get them trained up, which we will do this summer. So those are, continue to be a critical component of our safety plans. Another one that works well is teachers are empowered to make timely decisions. That ALICE protocol seems to, people are very familiar with now. I think we've been doing that for seven years. It was pre-pandemic when we did it. So I'm guessing it's probably our seventh or eighth year in that. I think teachers are understanding or comfortable that, you know, we, the game, I call it the game of what if, is almost impossible to play because you just, there's so many different scenarios and so many aspects. So in empowering them with the skills to make those decisions and what to do and where to go and how you make those decisions the very best you can. I think our teachers are feeling much more comfortable with that, although it's always anxiety-producing anytime you talk about, you know, safety and drills and things like that. So we continue to train and do tabletops and things like that so people feel like they're as re, as refreshed and, and keep that in their forefront as much as we can. And then the consistency of prioritizing safety concerns with our facilities, trainings and communication is another thing that works well, the group's thought. The last question is what's your wonder about school safety? And the three top wonders were the reunification of that staff and students if an event did take place. I can tell you, we are revamping that approach to make it a regional approach. I'm working with other superintendents in the Southeast region. We actually, our Southeast region just got them to, we collect dues from all of us that are members there. And so we dedicated a thousand dollars towards bringing a person in from that Southeast group to train this summer. Each school's going to send 10 to 16 identified staff members that already probably have some crisis training, school counselors, mental health workers, administrators. We'll all train together early in the fall, next fall, and make what we're going to call a regional reunification team. Right now, we have a, a site-based SAU 16 regional reunification team. So last year, when our Safety and Security Officer, Rich, went out to the national conference in July, nobody was really talking about reunification. He finally brought it up and then it kind of opened a good conversation out there at a national level. And so he got some information and we talked about it when he came back, really recognizing that even, even if an event happened at our middle school, the plan is to put those kids at the high school and the high school staff would be the reunification. Really, our whole SAU 16 would be greatly impacted should anything happen. So this regional idea takes an off-site location and then staff from other schools would be actually being the meters and the greeters because our staff will probably, most likely be traumatized. And to expect them to be function in high functioning, high crisis situations is not realistic. So we're working to change how that model works. The role in the system is the same with meters and greeters and all kinds of different roles to ensure kids' safety and return to parents. And, you know, ID check to make sure there isn't a court order that we can't release a kid to this parent. So it's a long process and we've said this before about reunification. It will, it is organized chaos. It will, hopefully, we never have to do this. But should we do it, we definitely have a plan and it will feel like we have a plan and there'll be a plan. But as we know, as we've seen in, in every kind of scenario where there's been a true crisis, there is always chaos. And so we have plans for how to manage that chaos, but I, I don't want to be misleading about that reunification. It's, it's, it will be chaotic. And there's, there's just so many factors to it and we've got all the bases covered. But having the bases covered and then enacting that in real life are two very different things. Even though we've done tabletop drills and it's gone smoothly, it's, it's different. So we're working on that, so we recognize that, that we hope to improve that. We will improve it in that process. The second wonder was the role of an SRO at our schools. And I do have some additional information, should you want me to share that at this meeting, in particular to elementary SROs. And then three was minimizing the risk after school hours or when buildings are being used by outside agencies. And that's always been a question of ours, particularly at the high school. You know, with athletic events and things like that, those doors are open for basketball games and, you know, all those kinds of things. And how does that work? And do we do a sweep at night or who does that? How do we do that? Our SRO, do they come and do a sweep in the morning? You know, so those are kinds of things we're talking about, but certainly that is a wonder and a reasonable wonder. So we will talk further about these. This will be the, on the top of the agenda for our meeting in the fall. We usually meet the end of September, beginning of October. So those will certainly be on the agenda as well as updates on our grants. I know, as you heard, we got radios here, other schools. I know the high school got a grant and they're putting ballards, is that what it's called? Ballards, like target balls, those things around a target, those big red balls. Only these are tubes to avoid no one can drive into the, into the school. And so there's a variety of things. We did apply for every school to get grants and all the schools except one got the grants. So we got, we asked for radios here.
We are getting three of the.
And you're also getting ballards too. So. That was kind of the update from the meeting unless Chris Sandusky, we planned the activity and he ran the activity that day. So if anyone has anything to add that was there, I may have missed it. That's just the activity synopsis.
I just have a question about, like I know CMS has been promoting the Anxiety Nation film. And like, it's like a, well, maybe it's like a question or reflection. It's like, obviously, we have to be prepared and that's like a necessity. And at the same time, right, there's all this research coming out around the stressors in kids' lives, period, right now. And then, of course, the reality is that they're, this generation, these generations are growing up with these, these kinds of very real, both news events and drills, right? That, and I'm just curious like how, how you, I guess as administrators, right, balance the very real need to have these drills and certainly plans with the real. I mean, it even makes me like emotional to talk about it, to think about these, these children going through these plans and hearing from my own kids, like, you know, and I just am curious how it's framed in a way, like just what the conversation is. Like obviously, this was in our district, but nationally too, around how to mitigate against those really real.
So when we first did ALICE, I wrote an actual teacher script for age-appropriate scripting to how to go through ALICE, how to practice it. I know in regards to students that are high anxiety or have heightened sense of sound and those kinds of things. I know special education and our administrators work with those classes, those kids get. They, they know ahead of time where maybe not all the kids do. So, and also our police officers have script cards in some of our schools. These are certain students and here's a script for them. We've talked about that. And I, I know a couple of years ago, pre-pandemic, we did that. I don't know if they're up to date because we had to switch over. But that's something we try to do also is at least have something for officers to see with a picture of a student because they might not be exiting the building for some reason. So trying to plan as, as well as we can, right, for those anticipated, this could be a problem. I know some of them have, you know, wear ear protections and things like that. So kids that we know are maybe higher anxiety, we try to be preemptive and proactive about addressing that. I think our teachers and our administrators do a great job of talking about why we do the drill. But also, we, we don't usually, we never say active shooter. We'll say, you know, it could be a hazardous waste and we need to evacuate. Or we say, if there's a stranger in this danger, right, this is what would you do? How would you get away? We don't say if someone comes in the school shooting a gun, right? So it's presented with stranger danger in, in age-appropriate language that hopefully reduces some of that, those feelings. I think that our teachers now are in a, a good place to have those conversations with kids. I think that the restorative justice practices and those circles have also helped be able to process that like after a drill. It's given our teachers and our staff a nice tool to use with our kids that everybody has that common kind of approach. And so our kids know that we can circle up and talk through it, which I think is another great addition to what you're speaking to. Certainly, it can be anxiety-producing, there's no, there's no doubt about it. So we don't do every drill a month. You know, we try to balance it so it's, it's, it's in their mind if, if the need arises, but it's not on their mind all the time. So that's how I think we try to balance it. And I don't know if anyone wants to add anything, but that's how we've tried to approach it, to keep that balance.
There are some questions after a drill, like there's a handful of kids who are like, what happened? What could happen? I just sort of reiterate with them that we're all here to keep you safe and we just need you to know how to stay safe, how to stay safe, that your teachers and all of us are here for you. Usually that really just, they just need like a little extra coaching. Okay? Their mind and the TV and all those things don't always help, but they just. I, I mean, I had to talk to a few kids that after our ALICE tabletop drill really, they didn't put it really into action. We just talked, they talked about it. There are a few kids that I was surprised about that were a little bit heightened and we just had them and they felt better after we just talked. They said they did.
Yeah.
I think too, the one thing I do like about ALICE is that it is transferable. So if your child's at the mall or the movie theater or the grocery store or, you know, they can employ that skill and that thought process, which I think is a great life skill, wherever, wherever they are. It's not just when you're in school, you could think through these steps.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty incredible how high-touch the approach is and how differentiated it is. It's not just a kind of plug and play program by any means.
Right.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks.
I didn't understand when you said that two police officers were going to be involved with our, was that with BIT teams or something?
Yeah, so we have police officers on our behavior intervention teams.
Okay.
We normally have them on our elementary teams, but when they changed the chief, we lost our member and the chief has signed up to get trained, the new chief has signed up to get trained this summer. So they'll be back on.
What is the level of interaction that they have with the students?
The team meets not, not with the student.
Okay.
So this is, they, the, the process is they may get a referral. The students get a referral to the team. At the elementary level, the referral generally comes from the administrators or the student services folks. And so it's already, the student normally has already been referred to the, kind of the building level. They've already gone to the student team here or SS, I don't remember all the initials that it is here, but a child study team. And so it's when those needs aren't being met and the students that are referred to BIT are normally some kind of in danger of harm to others or themselves.
Okay.
So again, often at the elementary level, they engage the whole family because at that, at that age.
It's just making the police aware of.
It's not to be aware, it, it's really that the police, particularly when they're local police, it's oftentimes things will happen on the weekend or at night. And if they are part of this student and this family is on our radar as a school system, as a, on a BIT team and vice versa. So it just keeps the community safer, everybody safer, right? And again, particularly when the students are older.
Right.
So if you're thinking about a high school student and we know that they are violent, have a violence tendencies and that it happens to be, we have the SRO, right, and a police officer on that team, then if they get a call at midnight on Saturday, there's some, there's some thought process there that they might approach that a little bit differently and have more information. So they can come in from maybe a mental health perspective and that community policing piece so that we try to work together. And that's why it's called an interventions team, because we, we really talk through how do we support the family and the student to be proactive so that we can pull in community resources. We've trained some folks from Seacoast Mental Health so they know, we can call them and say, this student is a BIT team referral. So they know that it's, it's a different level of need and desire on our part to support the family. So it's, again, this is, was a recommendation on the Governor's Task Force to have behavior intervention teams or threat assessment teams in schools. And the legislature just pack, just pass it in, at the federal level, the big act, which is all schools will have a threat assessment team. So we're way ahead of the game on that front. But finally, NABIDA, that organization that I'm on, the Advisory Board for the National Association for Behavior Intervention and Threat Assessment, we've been pushing and pushing and pushing. It's taken us four years to get that through because, again, that's really the mental health component to support students through interventions, not a disciplinary reaction to when a student is, you know, escalated to the point where they get a BIT, what we call in our school, a BIT referral. Some colleges campuses have had them, PEA has, oftentimes on college campuses, they're called care teams. They're, they're the same idea.
Right. All right, just because you mentioned it, I had sent an email to Esther with some questions about shatterproof glass or bulletproof glass in our vestibules because the legislation around guns right now lets anybody walk in. And I just don't feel like any average person in the front office would have any time to respond. I think then, in the meeting that I was at, one of the fire chiefs said that if it's really bulletproof, you can't shut.
It's against fire code.
Yeah. I feel like someone should invent a way to do that, but, and.
You mean that's a prob, is that, you mean that's a problem for fire safety, is that what you're saying?
It's against fire code to have that kind of glass. They can't break in.
Right.
To save.
So on the one hand, it prevents bullets from going through, but the fire department can't get through either.
To be clear, again, this is, we have addressed that concern in a different way without sharing too much information.
Sure, yeah, right, okay.
And then as part of that Governor's Task Force or recommendations, there was a school marshal program that I was interested in getting information on because when we talked about the SRO, a lot of the community feedback we got was the interaction with a uniformed police officer. There were many, many factors to the discussion, but that was one. And so I thought, well, maybe we should still at least explore the school marshals. And apparently, that's not even a program.
I, I talked to John Skipper, who's the Chief Training Officer. He used to be the chief in Stratton, but now he works up in Concord. He's in, I don't know what his official title is, but he runs the training center. And that's not something that's in their repertoire right now of training marshals, school marshals, I think, is what the recommendations were around.
Yeah, and because this is going to be part of the discussion in the fall, I won't go into, you know, more information on the SRO at this point, but it will be something I will bring back up again in the fall.
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy to note that, you know, I, I think across our SAU and many of our elementary schools in particular, Stratton also is interested in just, in thinking about possibly putting an SRO in the budget. So we've done a lot of research and I know when we did it before in the pandemic, I just, I just want to make it clear that the research has shifted a, a little bit in that if, if elementary SROs are used in what they're calling a triad in close context with a mental health worker, a social worker, school counselors, that's really that relationship and then an administrator, so that triad is really important, then it can be a successful addition to your school. Again, the role of that is not really around protection. It's really around community and building relationships. That's the primary role of an SRO. There is no research either way that indicates having. There is no research either way that indicates having an SRO helps keep you safe in an active shooter situation. However, there is recent research that says if you have an SRO and you use that triad model, it can be very helpful in a school to build those relationships for police to know, you know, families and students that may struggle and need extra support on the weekends and things like that. So I have that ready to go when that comes up in the fall.
And then, I'm sorry. The other thing was, it's failing me right now, on SRO. Oh, shoot. Sorry, go ahead. I just lost it.
I'm just curious, I mean, there's so much work you all have done to think about this and, you know, draw on best research. Do schools, like, do you share, is there like, I don't know, like, do you share the plan with like specialists who, are we the specialists or do we share like our plan for, you know, all the components that you've just discussed, which are really comprehensive? Like, is there, is there like an education, like someone who reviews those and says like, this is a, you've got the pieces or this is a gap that you guys have to work on? Because I'm just thinking like, there's all these many, many components that obviously work together and new research coming out. How do we, just sort of what is the process for schools on sort of sharing a plan and is there a process for sharing a plan and a panel of experts or somebody saying this, you're really strong in these areas, these are some areas that you could strengthen?
So the RSA at Homeland Security mandates that all schools file an ELP or an emergency operations plan and revise it every year by, I think it's August 15th. We looked at that policy earlier. It might be October 15th. I can't remember which date it is. That then gets reviewed by Homeland Security. And if you don't meet all the requirements or they see a gap, they'll send it back to you and say, this is an area you need to build. SAU 16 is their benchmark. They will refer schools to us. NABIDA, the National Organization, does the same thing because we're really one of the only elementary districts that do BIT teams as well as K-12 BIT teams. And so that's why I'm on the advisory board to help other elementary schools. So they'll contact me from Wisconsin. I just talked to someone from Wyoming that are trying to start BIT at an elementary level. So we pretty much are the leaders in this particular area. So I feel fortunate that it's always been in our, kind of on our radar, thanks to, I think Chief Kane and Chief Skipper, when they were chiefs, they really started to come together with Superintendent Morgan and we started the Safety and Security Task Force and then ruled from there. So we've been super fortunate. We've just been able to, I think we're one of the very few districts in New Hampshire that have a Rich Kane position, you know, which is very helpful. He'll go to schools, he walks through, he does all of our training, he does all of our grant writing for safety and security. So we're fortunate to, everybody supports those positions. So thank you for that.
Yeah. And I think the BIT teams, it's really impressive, the work that's just happened in the last 18 months. I mean, just, you guys are just full steam ahead. I do think it is most effective in the upper grades and I still feel like there's, there's an opening in the K through five schools that is missing. There's something more that could be done. Then another thing that Chief Pullen had said last year was that he would do more drive-bys and potentially put cars out front more often. And I don't know if that's happening because I don't come to these schools as much.
Yeah, I asked him, I don't think there's, I don't think there's, I think there was more of a police presence at the beginning of the year and that caused a, that caused a adverse reaction with our parents. We got a lot of feedback.
Was it so demanding, like 10 calls or was it like five calls?
I don't, I don't remember, Tanya.
I don't remember how many we were, but even like when they were out, I just went to stand out front and a lot of parents would walk by like quietly or like.
I bet you there was a lot of parents that were like, awesome, there's a policeman there.
Yeah, I, yeah, I did.
Right. Because they were just like, yes.
I think, yeah, I think the biggest situation right now in talking to Chief Pullen is he's down three positions and can't fill them. So that's what he's up against, just like all of us trying to fill pair of positions.
Yeah. On the occasional one, signals like there might be an issue. We have Officer Petrowski.
Yeah, Officer Petrowski is here a lot, obviously for DARE, but he's here all the time. I see him here all the time. So I think, you know, it also depends on, again, there's a relationship with Officer Petrowski.
Yeah.
And he's built that community and that, so when parents see him, he's built those relationships with, as all those fifth grade, you know? And so that's part of that whole position, how it's seen as a supportive community member, part of our school community, which is a great feeling for people. So I do have a couple safety requests for facilities. Do you want me to do those now?
Yeah, I just want to say if you're ever interested, you can schedule to attend an Alice drill. I did it once when my kids were in these schools and it's eye opening and it's a good learning experience so you, so you understand what they're going through.
And that's the adult training. So when you go through it, just keep in mind that's not how students are trained. That's the adult training because Chief Kane can be very clear.
No, I tended the student.
Oh, you did the kid one. All right. I thought you did the adult one.
I was with the kids, yeah. Okay.
So on the topic of safety, I did Rusty Lister, our facilities manager. There were some requests from the principals around safety issues and I'm just bringing them forth because I know we do have that fund balance and these were not budgeted for, but they're areas that relate to safety. So I didn't want to wait till next month just because if the board does want to approve them, we've got to kind of get on the PELMAC list, which sometimes can take a while. So I'm hoping if it is approved, we could get the things done this summer. So one of them is the Lincoln Street gym door panic device project. Can you help describe what the gym doors, Rusty tried to describe it to me and I'm not sure I remember now. They don't shut, they do shut, they can't lock, something.
They, they don't have, like you see the metal bars going across those doors, they're the crash bars, right? So they're literally just open doors. There's no way to secure that area. And again, you know, the scenarios would be very difficult to come up with where you would want to necessarily congregate in the gym, but to have the ability to do so is really where the PE staff just brought that to our attention.
So to get that done, those devices, so the gym door closest to the rear exit of the school will be the only one that has keyed outside trim. These devices can be with an Allen key or remain unlocked or locked, either way with those devices on that. So the cost of doing that is $10,090 for that, those doors. And then the two other requests from administrators is both at Lincoln and Main Street, we have this at both CMS and EHS, when a door is propped open, after you can set the timer, two minutes, one minute, an alarm goes off. We found that very helpful at the high school and middle school because teachers tend to, especially this time of year, put a, put something in the door to keep it open and that just opens us up for safety issues. So the cost of putting the alarms on the outside doors at Main Street would be $20,453 and at Lincoln Street would be $17,007. So the total cost for all three projects is $47,550. And again, I bring this to you now because these are all PELMAC and PELMAC is really the only sole proprietor of all of our cameras, everything. There's not really anyone else that does this work locally. There's one other firm way up in the White Mountains, which we tried once and that was not successful for us. So right now they're out until September, but Rusty's pretty sure that because we are a major account for them, we could, if the board chooses to approve that, we could get it done in the summer. So it'd be ready to go in the fall. So I bring those to the board for consideration, for a motion for approval or further discussion or to think about, and I can bring back next month, whatever you would like.
So this wouldn't come out of the fund balance?
This would come out of the fund balance.
Okay.
Because it's not a budgeted item.
I'm going to make a motion to approve $47,550 to secure the, for the items mentioned by Rusty Lister and Esther Asbell.
I'll second.
So my initial reaction is that I'm not in favor of the motion and I'll tell you why. Because I am generally in favor of approving safety related measures, but I don't really have a sense of what all the requests are. That's why we have a budget workshop. I mean, I understand the three requests that you just spoke about, Esther. But, you know, we have a budget workshop for a reason so that we can go over all these things and decide how much we think is reasonable to spend. And to really be considering this in a vacuum, I think is difficult. I understood, you know, sort of the reason for the request now because we might get a jumpstart in getting it done. But I also say we've not had this in our buildings for years. I don't, it's not something if we wait a month to talk about this, that it's going to make a huge difference. It's something that would potentially add another level if it's something the board wants to approve, but I just don't think it's a good practice to be, that's a significant amount of money. If it was just $5,000 or something, but we're talking about almost $50,000 worth of expenditures without understanding what the context is and what other possible expenditures might be. So I have a difficult time really moving forward with it at this point.
So instead of giving 1.4 back, we would give back, you know, $50,000 less? I feel like it's hardly a dent in that number.
I can tell you that I have some other things from Rusty that would be for consideration at the workshop if that helps Patrick to get a bigger picture. I don't believe there are any large wish list items from either principal this year because we were well funded and have gotten those items along the way and done the repairs. There is the roof that we've talked about and that estimate right now is about $109,000. To put it in perspective, that would come forward. Some fencing, to finish the fencing here, would be another $15,000. And then we have a request for special ed for some removing of existing walls and installing a new walls in a door. And that would be probably around $20,000. So those are the other additional requests that would come forward that I'm aware of at this point. So that helps give you a perspective that totals under, I think that's probably under $200,000. So I understand your point, Patrick. I just am bringing it because of the scheduling item, that's all.
Esther, if we didn't, if we waited, you know, till we, the budget workshop, what, what feedback are you getting? I mean, that would definitely push us out to September or it would push us out till next, like what would be the scenario?
Depends on, the co-op are considering, you know, we have some, we have some big projects going on at the co-op and the middle school that also involve PELMAC. And so right now, like I said, it's into September. I, I can't, I'm not 100% sure either way. I just know that Rusty was hopeful that he could get it on the books because he was getting nervous that if he really wanted it done before school started next fall, this would be our best shot. There's no guarantee that would happen either. It's just his, you know, his best shot, so.
Would either of these projects be a disruption to learning? Could they be done during school hours? I did not ask that question.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess I don't see how it would be disruptive. That's my reaction just in thinking about in terms of changing the doors and adding an alarm to it. It's not something like we're, you know, tearing apart a parking lot or...
Not jackhammering in the hall.
Right. That we're not doing that sort of thing, that it's that it has to happen over the summer. I understand the sooner the better if there's, if it's a safety initiative that we want to, really any of these things that we're talking about approving, potentially to budget workshop, the sooner the better for any of them. But I don't want to sound like a stick in the mud because I hear your point, Patty, about the, we happen to have a very large balance, but we always try to have that discussion in the context of what seems responsible. And it's without really knowing the full scope, although I just heard everything Esther said, this is the reason why we set aside an hour or more to really dig into it and hear the full description of each of these things and weigh them out. Oftentimes we approve all of it, sometimes we don't. Sometimes we say, you know, I understand the rationale for the divider in the, you know, in the library, but we're not going to approve it this year, even though we've had the money to do it. So I think it's just, it's not really about whether or not we have the money to spend it, we've just never spent all the money that we've had available. So I don't know. That's just my perspective. I would prefer to wait. So I just, I'm not in favor of approving this now, but...
I can't really speak much to the gym door thing. I'm not as familiar with that. But I know at all the safety meetings that I go to, you know, Rich Kane is literally walking around buildings at the beginning of the school year and shutting them because that's been an inlet for a lot of things that have happened within schools are unlocked doors or doors that are left ajar. So I just know that that's a stressor for our security team and our administrators because it's our policy to keep all of our doors locked. So that would be helpful.
I mean, it's not going to make much of a financial difference, but if we thought of, you know, to your point, that the gym door, right now, if the gym's not in the plant, you know, is designated gap, you know, if it's not the ideal gathering spot, I mean, obviously don't know. So, I mean, that's the unknown, but that the doors are a legitimate, you know, another plan is to go, you know, we could also, I'm not really ready to make a motion, but we could approve the doors, you know, fixing the doors with the alarms and then just wait on the expense of the, of the gym doors. It doesn't make a dent in the finances. I guess the rationale would be that, from what I'm hearing, Patty, it's like a, maybe a more urgent request for safety concerns to have the alarms installed.
I think it would have been done at all schools had it been afforded if they could, it wouldn't just be at our upper level schools, but there just wasn't money at the time. I don't know. When is the meeting that we have at the end of the year to talk about?
June 6th is the scheduled workshop.
I think that's part, I mean, and again, that's sort of what's going through my head is that if, you know, if this was something that had been brought forward in, let's say January, February, and we're like, look, we need to do this now, we can't wait for a budget workshop, I would feel differently about it. But we're, we're having one in three weeks, you know, essentially to go over this and, you know, not hearing for sure that it's going to make a difference in the delivery time. It might. Of course, the longer you wait is always more of a risk, but we don't know that one way or the other that it's going to get done before September or whenever. Probably wouldn't get done this school year anyhow, I would, I would guess, but I don't know, one way or the other. I don't know. I just want to be, I think my concern is being responsible to the taxpayers about this. I mean, as we, as we, we've tended to approve a lot of those requests, but we've never just blanketly approved things and without knowing the full context, it's hard to know. We've tended to prioritize safety, but at times we haven't approved some safety related recommendations too. We've just said that can wait until another time. So I don't know. I just feel uncomfortable without having the full discussion. That's why we have a workshop. That's just my perspective, though.
Do any of the administrators have any input?
These are just exterior doors, right?
I'm sorry, what?
Exterior doors?
Yeah.
We don't have a lot of living spaces except for like the gym, one room.
I am the schematic.
So you asked.
I had, yeah, asked that. Yep.
You mean it wouldn't?
Our classrooms don't have, aren't many classrooms that are, they have exterior doors, but most of our classrooms don't have access to the other side.
Is this recommendation being made to all elementary schools?
I don't know because I don't do those budgets, you know, not at Stratton at this time because they spent a large amount of money on a repeater this year, $79,000. So that's where they took...
You mean for a cell phone signal, is that, what do you mean for a repeater?
A repeater is so that first responders can talk to the inside and outside of the school. Stratton is this weird thing where they, they can't. Here it's not a problem, but at Stratton and at the high school, so they both have this thing called a repeater that allows first responders in the building to talk to first responders out of the building on their radios. Nothing to do with our system, however, obviously in an emergency, that would not work well if they couldn't talk to each other inside and outside the building.
Right. Yeah.
Susan? Well, I guess, it's just going over in my mind, it's just a safety aspect of this. And if those gym doors that are in the back of the school that's not very visible are not a safety, are not, are not up to code for one reason or another, I think it's something we seriously need to consider to make them up to code and safe. If June 6th is soon enough, then I'm okay with that, but I think it's something we need to think about.
It is four weeks away. I would be willing to table this conversation, but I'm feeling very confident that I will make a motion to approve that.
I'm not, I'm not voicing a concern about the, about the merits of those individual projects, just to be clear. It's more just about, I think as a process, I'd rather see it as a part of the full discussion, but I don't have any... but I don't have any concerns that were raised about the individual projects.
So Patty, there's a motion on the table, so you can either withdraw your motion or move it forward.
I will withdraw the motion, and we will discuss this on June 6th. If anyone wants to make a motion.
To, I don't know, to what?
I don't know. If anyone doesn't agree with me, let me know.
I, I will just say that in principle, I think if there is like, if we're hearing from Esther and school administrators that there's an urgent safety concern, that's critical, right? Like doors remaining open to the outside, I guess that's the one, the alarms. To me, I feel more confident in sort of supporting that when is as soon as possible versus sort of, but I guess, I guess to your point, I mean, what I'm also hearing in this conversation is, and I, I don't know this to be true, but I'm, what I'm gathering is that there might not be many other requests, but we do put the budget workshop on the calendar and give that time for you all to come to us, and so, what am I saying? I guess, I, I guess I, it's a hard one, but I, I guess I agree with you, Patrick, that if this was coming earlier in the year and wasn't just four weeks away, I would say we should, we need to address school safety as an urgent priority.
Can I, can I, real quick, just regards to the doors and the alarms? Just to be clear, there are not, exterior doors are not being propped in either of the schools. You know, you know, we may have conversations with Mr. Kane with regards to some interior practices that happen, but it's not a concern.
Okay.
There are not doors, exterior doors being propped.
I mean, that information, just knowing, like, are things in code? Like, what's informing the requests? Like, are they not in code? And are they, or is there a significant, like, practice that we feel like is, is putting our schools at risk? I think that, that context-
Yeah, I would just add that the, Rich Kane might not agree with that statement.
Right, me too.
Yeah.
We worked very hard with them with the votes on propping, and they don't prop doors.
And it's, it's, you know, I'm not going to get into semantics, but the recommendation was made from Rich Kane and, and the facilities manager. And again, I don't, I don't think four weeks is going to make any difference in getting it done, you know? I just told Rusty, they asked me to bring it, and so that's what I did for consideration. So I don't think it's, I don't need, I don't think we need to belabor it. I think we can bring it back, I'll bring it back on the 6th.
But I would say for him, Rusty, like, I would still, even if this, if he has a concern like this earlier in the year, I'd rather hear about it and not wait till June, right? If there's a legitimate safety-
Well, I think, you know, Rich reports back, and then they get quotes, and that takes, again, Pelmac being the only game in town, it, he, if I went back to Rusty, my guess is he's been asking for this quote for probably two months.
Right, and we've just used it at the other schools, and we've learned, like, the benefits of it and how time-saving it can be, and you can duplicate Rich like tenfold.
Yep, so I'll, I'll save it and bring it back.
Okay.
I have a question, is the, we usually do the workshop at 5:00, is that still, is that what we're doing on the 6th?
I'm okay with, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Heather, are you good with that?
What day of the week is that?
It's a Tuesday, I think.
6th, June 6th.
June 6th.
Yeah, I'll leave it at work.
Is it a Tuesday? Is that right? I think I looked before.
This is not our budget workshop, this is just-
June 6th is the budget workshop.
The budget workshop.
The 13th is a regular-
It's on the first Tuesday, first Tuesday at 5:00.
I do have a standing conflict at that, the first Tuesdays?
I'm sorry, what?
I can't make that, is that, should I?
June 6th.
Yeah.
We can talk about a different date. Is there another date that works out?
I really can't talk about a different date if you want me there.
Okay, because that's, you don't, you don't have a flexibility.
There's graduation and that graduation, and this demonstration of learning, and it's pretty tight.
We don't until the next meeting, right?
No.
On a different day, right?
No, we vote, we make a decision that day.
We do.
Yeah.
It's a Tuesday, the first Tuesday is the budget workshop, and the second Tuesday is the board meeting. That's not to say if you want to move the workshop to the 13th and meet at, at 5:00 and do the budget workshop from 5:00 to 6:00 on the 13th.
Yeah.
Monday, the 5th work, or no?
It doesn't, for Esther, right? You don't have flexibility, it doesn't sound like-
There's just so many activities at all the schools those last two weeks.
So essentially, we would have the workshop and then go into the board meeting.
I would just post it as a, a board meeting with budget workshop first, and then we would, we would open it up and I would do the public, you know, just later.
I'm up into that, I mean, so that-
Do we have flexibility to start a little bit earlier than 5:00?
I do, I don't know if I-
I don't know, do other members of board, because I get concerned about, even with the hour, just, maybe that's plenty of time, but if there's a longer discussion for whatever reason, to feel compressed would be difficult. I mean, I guess we could carry it over into our board meeting.
4:30?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, 4:30, is that a possibility? We can always take a break if we're done early, but.
Okay. I could have Jean for sandwiches instead of snacks for that meeting.
Sure.
So you had-
I'll order it. We'll have dinner. What do you want?
Thank you, sorry.
So 4:30?
4:30, does that work?
That works, I can make it work.
So we won't meet on the 6th, we'll meet at 4:30 to do the budget workshop first, and I will have Jean order a little bit more like a, a real sandwich or something, so you folks aren't, we all aren't hungry.
Do you think I'm really asking to be purest for a sandwich?
Yeah, yes.
It's a lot of stress.
4:30 start. It's in here.
So nothing on the 6th?
Correct. Thank you.
Sorry to be the pain.
Oh, no, I actually prefer just having one.
Yeah, I love that, yeah.
All right.
Where are we, just here, 4:30?
Yeah, okay. Okay, where are we at? So that was safety and security.
Negotiations.
Negotiations, Patrick?
It's not anything that's active right now.
Okay.
I do have an issue for non-public regarding negotiations.
Okay.
Wellness, I haven't heard anything.
Thursday meeting, a meeting this coming Thursday, 3:00.
In person?
Yes.
Where?
Last one was at the SAU office in the room down there, in the conference room.
Okay. I'll go if I can, I haven't been to one yet. I'll go with you.
Okay.
I don't think, does anything with real right happening right now?
Yes, there is.
There is, okay.
This morning, Beth and I sent to Gold School just the application process and having to do that. Is due on September 20th or September 21st?
Oh, good.
So we can get them to you for your tour meeting, so you can-
Good, get some interest.
That's good.
Did you all get any feedback? I know there weren't a ton of applications last time, was that just kind of coming out of COVID and getting people kind of back used to what, I know we did some revisions on the application, like, have you guys got any feedback on?
No, not as to why, like, why people, I just, I wonder too if people were just overwhelmed or stressed, I don't, like, this is our first back in, I don't know.
This will give them the summer, though, to think about it and, you know, collaborate maybe with another fellow.
We also, I also wonder about the, the, the timing. So we pushed it out this morning, we'll push it out again at the beginning of the school year, which doesn't give a lot of time.
No, yeah.
Right? And the end of school, the beginning of school tend to be very-
Intense.
Yeah. So I just wonder about the timing of sending, sending it out to staff. I'm trying to think of a particular task.
Yeah, I think so, it could, even if the deadline is still September, like, if, if people, I'm just thinking about all these things, projects we've discussed today, and like, if there is a way to say, here are things, like, people are thinking about, does anyone want to get, I don't know, just to that idea of collaboration, so that people are aware of some of the projects that might be some teachers or staff are thinking about, and they don't have to necessarily apply until September, but if they have a little bit more time when they're all together in the school building, or even to engage students in thinking about it. I think this time of year is so tricky with all the end of year stuff and then coming, to your point.
But in the summer, I think.
Yeah.
I also wonder if we should get a balance on what to do.
Yeah.
It's up. I don't know. It was $150,000, but it's right, so.
On the ukulele, so 150 minus the ukulele projects.
Well, the little libraries, yeah.
Oh, right.
And the little libraries and other things, yeah.
So we should probably get a balance for you guys.
When we send out the email, can we do say in the past, these are the kinds of projects that would be interested, sparks in the 16th, you know, class.
I remember. Okay, next is facilities, I think, has there been anything? You covered it.
That's what I-
Okay. And then the last one is communications and community engagement.
I can't remember if we recorded on this last time.
Yep, on hold till September.
So we're not meeting again till September, once, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then going on to new business, we'll go through the policies with Heather and Patrick.
Okay, I'll try to be brief. So there's a, there's a bunch of policies that the policy committee reviewed that relate, obviously, to health, and there's a bunch of new ones, there's several that are revised, and then there's policies that are sort of newer revised that there's a recommendation that because of the revision or the new policy is more comprehensive of withdrawing a former policy. So I'm going to take them in chunks, I think, I think this will work, to start with the new ones, and the, and then the revised ones, and then to, and then to do roll on those, and then to separately talk about the ones that suggest withdrawing another policy. And you get me today, because Patrick and I are tag teaming, so I'll try, I wish I had, I need my water. Okay, so I'm going to start with policy, policy code IMG, this is animals in schools. This is a new policy for, for Exeter and actually Kensington too, the other districts do not have, or already have a policy like this in place, so this is new for us. And this is pretty straightforward, it, it just really provides guidelines for allowing animals in schools. This is separate them from service animals, that's another policy. So that's that policy. The second policy, policy code IMGA, so I'm going to talk about these two, these are two ones related to animals. So the first is IMG, IMG, animals in schools, second, IMGA, and that's service animals in schools. And this is also a new policy, it's been expanded to include mini horses, which is a new ADA regulation. Personally would love to see a mini horse in our schools, and an expectation, just clear expectations for review, greater transparency for individuals with disabilities and for the administrators who oversee compliance with the policy. So I'm going to just take a breath there, we won't make a motion yet, but any questions about the two policies relating to animals? Okay, the next new policy I'd like us to look at is policy code JLCDA. The policy name is medical treatment parent consent, and this is a new policy. And this is a new policy provided as a result of New Hampshire law, 2022 HB 1244. It requires parents and guardians to provide explicit written consent for any medical and dental treatment that is provided in the school setting, and the policy committee added to that also optical treatment, since there are some, sometimes we have people who test vision, et cetera, in the schools. Any questions on that one? Okay. The next new policy is policy code JLCGA. This is emergency plan for sports-related injuries and additional protocols for athletic This is again, a policy that is new to facilitate compliance with RSA 200:40-C, and it requires the creation of emergency plans for sports-related injuries, it sets guidelines for gathering health records for student athletes engaging in sports, and procedures for overturn, overseeing return to play. So this is a sports-related injury policy. Any comments on that one?
Can we go back for a minute to, what was the one just before?
The one before that?
That was on-
That was JLCDA, medical treatment parent consent.
And this was CJ.
And this one-
I thought I, yeah, so I guess I, the part that's in here, I'm wondering why it doesn't say the superintendent slash designate instead of just the superintendent. A lot of times our policies say that.
Which one are you referring to, Patrick?
I'm looking at JLCDA, the medical treatment parent consent.
Oh.
I don't know.
Probably just wasn't overs-
Because when you have the part down below where it talks about the principal, it says the principal or principal designate, but I would think it would be the same thing for the superintendent in the second paragraph, it would say the superintendent or designate.
Mm-hmm.
Or just, I think in the last policy, it just had, listed a superintendent slash designate, something just to indicate that, because it's, the superintendent is already responsible for a lot. They should be able to designate someone with some of these pieces without, without the policy not being flexible, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the new policies? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to, to, can I make the motion? Yes, I can make the motion, right? I'm going to make a motion to accept policy code IMG, policy code IMGA, policy code JLCGA, and then also policy code JLCDA with the, as amended.
I will second.
I think, do you have to make the?
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, great. I'm going to now go through the ones where there were revisions to existing policies, and these won't include the ones where we're also recommending withdrawing a former policy. So the first one is policy code JLC, this is student health services and nurses. So this again is, just reflects changes that the requirement that school nurses have Department of Education certification, and just clarify some of the responsibilities relative to nurses and school health services in general. The next one is policy code JLCC, this is policy names, my favorite name, head lice and, someone help me out, pediculosis, is that, did I get that right? So this policy is just honestly to reflect most current advice and recommendations from the American Association of Pediatrics and National School Nurses Associations relative to sort of new thoughts around the spread, or evidence around the spread of lice and nits, and sort of balancing that with detrimental cause, you know, effects in students when they're excluded from school or sent home. So this policy updates that and outlines expectations for protocol. The next revision-
Can I ask a question, Patrick?
Mm-hmm.
Just in terms of, I know I'm getting a little technical here, but I'm noticing at the bottom of the, is it the first, second page, first page? Just the use of the word he, she, I, I thought we were sort of getting away from that and trying to replace that with they.
Mm-hmm, yep. So that, the recommendation on the JLCC is to amend with gender neutral.
Right, just to, exactly, but I'm noticing- But I'm noticing where there's one thing that's jumping out is at the end of page one, but there may be other parts in there where, just review for that.
Great. Thanks for that, Patrick. Okay, so then the next revision is policy code JL, JLCD and J. Is this the one? Yes. So many, okay. JLCD and JLCDR administering medication to students. So this is really focused on revisions to reflect, obviously, as the title says, administering medications to students within our schools. It just, it really is clarifying some of the authorities to do that, taking out some redundancies. It also reflects the enactment of RSA 244-A and 253-57 regarding the self-administration of medications. And then it also, we discussed just some revisions to clarify, you know, things around collecting and maintaining, just where the medication is stored, how it's delivered and notification if a student refuses to take the medication. Any, any feedback on that one? Okay, and then the final one under revisions is policy code JLCJ, policy name concussion and head injuries. So we, all of our districts have this in place, but there were updates to the model policy in 2020 with the passage of RSA 200:63. And so this reflects those updates. There are separate versions or previous versions, I guess this is an important note from Heather, that previous versions, both the elementary and secondary versions, can be found on our SAU website.
So what's, we don't know what's being changed necessarily on the policy.
It should, the policy should
It's not, it's not redlined.
It's not
No, not that one.
Oh, because there were, okay, so the reason this policy was not redlined is because so many updates were made to it, which is why Heather is referencing the website versions for comparison. We didn't spend a lot of time, I mean, there wasn't anything outstanding in our discussion of this one.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any comments on that one? Okay, so let's go ahead and I'll make a motion to approve the following revised policies. So this is, this would be policy code JLC. I'm going to do this on, JLCD and JLCD-R, JLCJ, and then also JLCC as amended for gender neutral pronouns.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're almost there. So the last three are policies that are either new or revised, but that suggest withdrawing a former policy because this new policy is more comprehensive. So the first one is policy code EBCJ, communicable and infectious diseases. So this policy is a comprehensive policy, our former one. It replaces the identical policy or sample policy, which was IHAMC, which only addressed HIV and AIDS. So this policy addresses many communicable diseases. So the recommendation is to remove IHAMC, which was the identical sample policy, and to replace that policy with policy EBCG, which is in your packet. And essentially, it addresses inclusion and exclusion. It applies to both students and staff and outlines, you know, expectations of procedure confidentiality and data privacy. Okay, so the next one is policy code JLCB, and that's immunization of students. So as you can imagine, during the COVID, there were significant updates to this policy in both 2020 and 2022. And then the model policy was revised due to an amendment to RSA 141-C:20-C. So I guess the most significant changes, which there are several, that that removes the requirement by law to, that you need, that a parent's request for a religious exemption for immunization required for school attendance be notarized. So that notary requirement has been removed by law. There's a new paragraph to reflect a 30-day window for proof of immunizations for children of military families under RSA 110-D. And then there's some exemptions for students under the McKinney-Vento Act for homeless children or unaccompanied youth. So the recommendation is to withdraw a former policy, JLCB-R, which is more like an immunization requirement document, which the committee felt was more of a reference document and really not so much of a policy, frankly. And then to include it as an appendix to this policy, but to adopt this policy and withdraw the former.
It is required by public schools to have certain immunizations, correct?
But you can also be exempt. That's what this policy sets.
Yeah. Why, I just think it's silly that they're still holding on to the religious exemption if you don't need to get it notarized. Like, why even mention it if people want it? You know what I mean? The formality is gone.
I think because the nurse was still in the documentation that you're not getting your child immunized.
Yeah.
And most, I mean, as you can see, those revisions are coming from amendments to law. Any more discussion on this particular policy? Okay. And then finally, the policy code JLEC, emergency care and first aid. So this is a new policy. We currently have a policy called EBBC, which is the same title. But it was separated into sort of two different topics. So the recommendation is to merge these under one policy. The two topics were support services and then students. So we're hoping, the recommendation is to withdraw the former policy and combine those two sections into one. And essentially, it's sort of per our conversation today is to make sure all staff kind of know the protocol if there's an emergency or if a student is in need of first aid and that those protocols are clear and the communication is clear. And also, it allows for the district to obtain and store and administer medication for emergency situations. So that is really, this was a pretty comprehensive policy. I know there's a lot in it, but. Okay?
So just a couple on this, on this policy, just a couple of grammatical things.
Sure.
Under the first paragraph where it says notifying parents, it should be notifying parents/guardians at number four in the first paragraph.
Patrick, which one?
The first, emergency care and first aid. So JLEC, the first paragraph, there's a item number four, says notifying parents. I would recommend it be notifying parents/guardians. And then just a smaller grammatical thing towards the bottom of the page, third paragraph below that has the district with a small d, and later on it has the district with a capital D. And that's, I think generally we would capitalize district in our policies. Doesn't change anything substantively, but later on it does have parents/guardians in the document, but it just doesn't have it under the categories at the beginning.
Any other discussion? Okay, so. Where are we at with those three?
Motion to pass EBCG, JLCOB, and JLEC as amended.
Yeah, so we all, all three, yes.
Do you also have to make a motion to withdraw other policies at the same time?
Yeah. So set two separate motions, one to pass these and withdraw the other. Okay, so we'll do the first one. So I'd like to make a motion to pass policy code EBCG, policy code JLCB, and policy code JLEC as amended.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then
You do need a motion to withdraw those that list
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to withdraw policy IHAMC, policy JLCB-R, and policy EBBC.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand by saying, and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nice job. Had to, like, color code it.
I have something for new business when we move on, before you move to old business. Do you want me to go forward? Fanning?
Get there. Okay. Yeah, okay, so. Yeah, go ahead, Patrick, sorry.
Okay, they're short, both of them are short. One is just, I wanted to share with the board in particular, it's something I'd encourage you to think about attending. There's an event next Wednesday at Phillips Exeter. It's called Educating the Educators. It's a DEIJ related education program that's sponsored locally, but has folks from all over the seacoast that are going to be there. It happens to be in our backyard. So there's both an option to attend in person as well as via Zoom. I can share information about it later, and I think some of the SAU staff are planning to attend as well, so something
I think you do have to register.
You do have to register, but it's free, but just sign up to participate.
I attended the last one, it was good, I enjoyed it. They were reminding me that we also have our community conversations, our second one, which is about restorative practices happening on the 18th here at Lincoln Street, I think at 6. But we're working with getting the flyer out to everybody, but that's another thing to note, is our second community conversations, which we had a really good turnout previously, so we're hoping to have another, but it is on restorative practices.
What was the date again?
The 18th, right here at Lincoln Street.
So that's, so that's the next day, yeah. So you can, you can try to rival Esther's schedule by scheduling something every night.
Same night as top 10 dinner.
I was going to say. The other thing I just wanted to bring up is something about social media use, usage. I guess I'm just hearing more and more lately about that topic, and I don't have a proposal to make, but just I wanted to flag that as an area that I think as a board we may want to circle back to. The APA came out with recommendations today about teen usage in particular of social media, but it actually goes down to 10-year-olds. So it would overlap with our, particularly some of our Lincoln Street kiddos. And I think they had 10 different recommendations. Some of them are for at-home use and parent oversight, but some of it also would apply to school time. And then the other thing is the Washington Post had an article today about, it's called "Students Can't Get Off Their Phones," and talks about what some schools, and again, going down to fourth graders, are doing with cellphone usage in particular, and whether it's creating policies, or there's something called Yonder where you can lock phones in a little pouch and they have to use a magnet to unlock them at the end of the day, or there's all kinds of different approaches that schools are taking across the country because they're finding it's incredibly distracting, as well as all the things that David Ryan has been sharing with us lately about, you know, some of the anxiety and mental health related concerns. I mean, David's and the Attorney General's information that they shared was more focused on particular social media providers, but this isn't, this isn't targeting particular providers. It's more just generally about internet usage and those things, that there's a great educational benefit, but also can cause some real harms if it's not regulated. And I've just seen more recommendations lately, and it made me think about whether or not we should be thinking about approaches to try to be helpful, to educate, and not just have it be the Wild West that it was when my kids grow up with social media. None of the parents really knew what to do, so they just kind of won't, you know, were winging it, turns out how to regulate these things. And I know there's been a lot of education on social media harms with predators and those sort of things. We've had our police come in and do some of that sort of piece, but there's, it seems to be more and more comprehensive look at the influence of social media and just, I think it'd be worth having ongoing conversations or another conversation at some future point in time. And those APA recommendations, like I said, they just came out today. I just glanced at them. I doubt that everyone's really had a chance to really, you know, fully look at them and think about how they might impact our schools, but there's, the APA isn't the only group that's looking at this. There's a lot of groups that are looking at this right now. So that was it in terms of, I don't have any requests for an action, just sort of bringing it up as a, as a topic for us to consider revisiting at some future point.
I feel like there's been outside conversations outside of the schools, but maybe they've come into the schools to have these discussions. So, yeah, I would support, you know, doing those sort of workshops or having presentations or something.
Do we have a, like, a media, I mean, I guess an age appropriate, you know, is very different, you know, age groups here, but like a media literacy, like, is there, is that, does that happen in the schools currently at this level? I know they try to do
We talk about digital citizenship and like cyberbullying and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
We have some policies that are related to, that overlap with it.
I was just even thinking, like, education around hours and, I don't know, there's, there's policies, I mean, I'm just curious what is already happening at the school level.
Steve, I think the library, our librarians have some standards on, like, reliable sources and how to use basic research.
Yeah.
Things like that. This is like, these are the super roles.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then we do have a tech person that we share, and so she helps plan some lessons and does the digital citizenship and some of the other pieces. Have to look into it more, it's exactly
And Officer Steve helps with cyberbullying.
At one point in time, the wellness committee also looked at this issue because they used to talk about the 013 program, and I think part of it was the amount of screen time that you spent was included within that as part of a wellness
Yeah, I know the health program at the middle school and high school, you talk about that in their health classes, but I don't know at this level.
It's an interest, I agree with you, because I'm just thinking, you know, by the time students get to CMS, many do have greater access to the device, like, it's, it's almost, I don't know, just what's that, what is that readiness before they get, it's such a different culture once they get to, to middle school and the access to those devices or the peer pressure to have the devices or to, you know, it is an interesting thought to see what we could
We don't, yeah.
Think about. It's, I think it's not like so much the, for me, it's less about the, I mean, I don't necessarily think many probably are, maybe some are trying to bring those kinds of devices to school, but I'm just thinking more about the literacy around it and the culture.
I think the focus in this age group would probably be to the families, the caregivers, and educating that, like, I don't know how to shut down some devices and put, you know, securities on some of the devices my kids have, and that would be
But I think at Lincoln Street School, there are kids with cell phones in fifth grade. There, I mean, there's absolutely, there's the, the access to that is a big jump, I think, from, you know.
They can't use them at school.
Right.
They have to stay in their backpack. And even if they did leave them on, we've had occurrences where the backpack's ringing, and you're like, what is that, what's going on? They die, the battery dies all day because it's searching because it can't get in. And then kids are stressed out because their battery's dead, and so they've learned their hard way.
hard way that they have to turn it off or else their battery's going to be dead at the end of the day. It's a lot of an AM PM check-in for parents more. Did you get to school? Did you get home? But, you know, they're really, they can't use them because they can't get on their network.
Well, I'll just share a related story. I have a daughter in sixth grade, and she told, this is a one-case story, but she told me, she goes, you know, Mom, it's so, and I'm not saying that bullying, bullying absolutely happens in all of our schools, but I thought this was an interesting comment, she goes, it's so, except, most people know not to bully, which I would not say was something when I grew up, right? Like, that that even language around bullying and awareness of bullying was sort of part of the culture and sort of like constitution of what it meant to be young and knowing that people were looking out for that and that you knew where to go. And I guess I, from the, it's like, what would that culture shift be in our schools at this level so that they get to, they have some self-regulation versus their parents having to, I mean, it's both sides.
Personally, I don't think it's an issue of, to that respect, I think that's why we have the restorative justice and restorative practices.
Right.
Because we're seeing that data at the middle school, now kids being able to.
That's right.
Drew is, the kids that go to Exeter are actually able to manage conflict better and advocate for themselves because they use that, they use those skills. So he's seeding, he's seeing that playing out, and I would hope that around some of these things around social media and bullying like that would play into those skill sets, right?
Right.
And so I think at the elementary level, that foundation is really set with, do you have the skills to advocate and manage and understand respecting your community and respect how you, how your actions impact, right?
Right.
Whether it's on social media or whether it's physically touching someone or.
Right.
That grander scale, I mean, it's a little bit different than Patrick's point, but I think it's more to your point that those are the skills we try to instill in our kids at this age, so when they get to middle school and their freedoms start to, you know, and they get bigger and bigger, when they have a better decision-making process around social media, around conversations, around bullying, around all those, those things. And Drew's reporting that the data for the Exeter kids, he's noticing a difference, a better difference, that these kids hold on to the skills and are using those skills. So that's, that's.
Yeah, because the tech is designed to be addictive, right? It's like, you know, you can put all the safeguards in place, but ultimately comes down to that choice point of the user. Yeah. I haven't seen the recommendations, but I think it's a good.
It's worth looking up.
Yeah.
I mean, you can, you can find them, they just came out today, so.
Okay.
I do need a motion for non-public.
Okay.
If everything else is done.
Is everyone good? I'm going to make a motion to go into non-public under RSA 93-A-3-I.
What is that? What is I?
Just under safety.
Okay, just to declare for safety reasons, or the safety exception to why you can have a non-public. Okay.
Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Roll call. Could I get a roll call vote?
Aye.
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 And I do need Tanya and Ryan to stay.
Yep. Everyone else, enjoy the rest of your evening.